Good morning. The constable has confirmed that the warrant for this special town meeting has been properly posted. The town clerk has informed me there is a quorum present. The special town meeting of the town of Hamilton is now open. Can't hear me?
Give me one second, please. Thank you. I'm so sorry. Go ahead. Go.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll start again. The constable has confirmed that the warrant for this special town meeting has been properly posted. The town clerk has informed me there is a quorum present. The special town meeting of the town of Hamilton is now open. My name is Bill Bowler. I'm the town moderator. Welcome to the October 1st, 2022 special town meeting and thank you very much for your attendance. Excuse me. We will start as always by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the fire of the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation, united, all sovereign states, with just one common ground.
Some general reminders. If you're a registered voter in Hamilton, you should have picked up a voting clicker, which looks like this. If you haven't and wish to vote, then please get one now outside. Please turn off your cellphone to silent. That is a joke in this building. If you need to take or make a call, please leave the meeting to do so. We welcome non-voters to town meeting, but ask that you sit in the visitors' area, which is located in the back section of the auditorium. I'd like to introduce the people who are sitting in front of you. First, here we have Lauren Goldberg, KP Law, Town Council; Corinne Cale, Town Clerk; Joe Demelwitz, Town Manager; Alex McGee, Finance Director; in front of me, Select Board Chair Shawn Farrell, and members Jamie Knidson, Caroline Bollu, Bill Olson, and Tom Myers; and for the FinCom, Christina Shank-Hargrove, FinCom Chair, John McGrath, John Prelich, Harry Phillip, and David Wanger, members. And as non-resident town officials and those assisting the Select Board or Finance Committee to be present here, so they may be available to answer questions. Members of the press and video crew have also been allowed to be present. I hope you have brought your copy of the warrant. If you did not, there may still be some extra copies and they'd be in the lobby. The agenda for the meeting is the warrant. It was prepared by the Select Board. To bring an agenda item before the meeting, I will recognize a member of the sponsoring board, committee, or individual, so they can make a motion. If the motion is seconded, I will recognize the proponent to speak to you about it. Once they are done, I will open discussion. If you wish to speak, you must first ask me to recognize you. To save time, I ask that you already be standing at one of the microphones, which are in the aisles. When you're recognized, please state your name and street address. You may then make comments or ask questions about the motion. You will have three minutes to do so. That's three minutes. Your comments and questions must be within what we call the four corners of the motion. Please do not make comments about any person who is in favor of or against the motion, just on the merits of the motion. And please, no applause. All motions to amend must be submitted to the town clerk in writing. If you need assistance in framing a motion to amend, Town Council will provide you with some assistance. No more than one amendment may be pending at the same time. A vote is first taken on the amendment and then on the main motion. As I mentioned, when a vote is taken, we'll be using the electronic voting clickers. Someone from the company will demonstrate the use of the clickers in just a moment. In the unlikely event that we have trouble with the new technology, we will revert to the use of voter cards, and I will ask you to raise your voter cards. And I will then decide visually whether there is the necessary majority or other required vote. If I am in doubt, our seven voters question the vote immediately after I declare the outcome. I will have the vote counted by the tellers, who I will appoint at that time. We'll have a demonstration of the clickers now, please.
While we still don't have the screen, the vote is now open. If you push 1 for yes, 2 for no, and if you need to change your mind, you can always do that while Bill keeps the vote open. Upon Q, when we close the vote, nobody can change the vote anymore. Only the last vote counts. So while we figure out the screens, the vote is open. I can see 22 so far. I voted. Please vote. Fifty, seventy-three, eighty-six. I'm going to be your visual screen. One twenty, one twenty-two, twenty-seven, thirty-five, thirty-seven, one forty at this point.
Can I bring something up real quick?
Yes.
Last time my clicker wasn't working. Can you tell people what it looks like when their clicker is working?
Thank you so much for that. Yes. Typically, the keypad wouldn't turn on. There would be no number on the display. There would be no insignia on the display. You can go get a new one. This is completely non. It doesn't matter which keypad you have. Just grab a new one. Thank you. One fifty-one at this point?
Excuse me. Look out here. It's working correctly, not even.
It basically says the number that you pushed. So if it's 1 you want, if it's yes you want, then that's the number you would see. If it's no you want to vote for, then you would see 2. One fifty-six at this point. Bill, do you think?
Yeah, I think we.
Alright, one fifty-eight. So when I close the vote and we have that screen, we will have a result. Right now, I can read it off. It's one forty yes and eighteen no.
Okay. Now, about fifteen to twenty seconds for you to vote.
Perfect.
Thank you. Okay, before we get, start going through the warrant, our State Representative, Jamie Belcito, is here, and she'd like to bring us a brief update.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For a morning greetings from Massachusetts State House, I wanted to give some updates on the Hamilton perspective from the Commonwealth. I wanted to thank everyone here this morning. This is democracy at its finest. I am very thankful for the relationships I have here in this town. Nothing but good folks working to do the best they can for the residents here in Hamilton, and so I thank everyone here this morning. Wanted to just highlight a couple of figures that we were able to, at the state level, bring more monies into the district for the schools. We saw that, and correct me if I'm not stating this, school board, looks like we were able to bump up funding from 3.791 million in FY '22 to 3.889 come next year. So we really leaned in hard at the State House to make sure that as much monies can go into our schools are doing exactly that. We were able to get $25,000 for the town of Hamilton for a fuel tank, a pump replacement that will be on its way. Also, wanted to say that as many grants that are available out to the town, we are always working with Joe and the Chiefs and the Select Board to make sure that everyone's taking full advantage of exactly any free money, so to speak. And we were able to work with, or the Hamilton Police Department, rather, was able to work with the grants and obtain $98,000 for municipal safety grant programs. We're still in the midst of working on a final economic and development bill at the State House. It's just been a little bit of murky waters, going through some figures, but did want to point out that when all is said and done, and I'm hopeful that that will conclude by December of this year, we were able to get $50,000 for a court food pantry to make sure that we're able to continually bolster our communities with food insecurity. One last thing. Your voice does matter. It matters here as you're clicking on the very new, updated technology with being able to press yes or no. And wanted to say hats off to one of your fellow Hamiltonians, I'm not sure if that's what you call yourself, generals, that phoned my office, needed some help on an issue with assessments on their home properties. As a fully disabled veteran, we were able to take his issue and actually pass it into legislation so that all fully disabled veterans in whatever municipality they live in only have to look for an assessment at one point. So truly, always feel free to pick up the phone and call me. I know many folks do, and we're able to take your voices and change. So change here happens in this forum this morning. It can also happen in the Commonwealth. Very proud of your representation. I'll pause at the State House, and I thank you for this opportunity allowing me to give you an update this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Okay, we will begin. There is no consent motion this time around. Article 2022, 10-2-1, Compensation Classification Table. I recognize Christina Shank-Hargrove.
I move that the town amend the personnel bylaw by adopting changes to the classifications and compensation table and set forth an Appendix A to the 2022 appendix book. This warrant article is required to update the compensation tables. The compensation tables are where, just a table that shows the compensation to the various personnel of the town, and it needs to be updated regularly to reflect any changes that have been made in the personnel. This was done at the annual town meeting, but there were a couple things that were not known at that time. For example, there were union contracts under discussion that had not been finalized. Those have not been finalized. And just two personnel changes were made that were listed in the book of recommendations. And so those changes have been reviewed and made, and we just need to update the compensation tables to reflect those changes. They've been incorporated in paper on this article. I recommend a paper plate.
Thank you. I neglected to ask for a second. Is there a second? Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, hearing nuns, we'll move to a vote. Again, you have, you'll have fifteen seconds to vote. Press 1 for yes, and 2 if you're against adopting the new compensation table. So voting is now open. Voting is now closed.
Mr. Moderator, do we have one second? We're worried about the optics of non-visual vote.
Well, yeah, we've got it covered. In terms of.
Yep, Mr. Moderator, thank you. What we're going to do, the screen here shows the numbers. They're going to write it down. I'm going to grab it from them, verify it's the same, and deliver it to the moderator to announce. Is that acceptable?
That's acceptable to me. I think that's secure. The vote is 170 yes, 3 no. The motion passes, and I so declare. Before we move on to the next motion, I understand that Senator Bruce Tar is here. Just like to recognize him, and if he has any brief remarks he'd like to say, he could come up to the front. If not, we'll move on. Senator.
Good morning, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the members of town meeting. I really take time out of what I know is always a busy agenda at town meetings. But today, I did want to take just a moment to recognize something significant that happened this week, which was the signing of a charter agreement relative to the conservation of water and the development of water resources and the protection of the Influa River. And it was a landmark agreement that was signed by every stakeholder in the Influa River watershed. And I wanted to take a moment to thank the town administrator and the town, Mr. Moderator, for their work in helping us to advance that agreement and pursuing the kind of studies that will give us a foundational understanding of the challenges that we face to be able to ensure not only that we have adequate supplies of water, but also that we protect this precious natural resource upon which so many of us depend. So I did want, in addition to thanking everyone who's coming up for town meetings, which is critically important, also want to say thanks to the town and to the administrator for great work in setting the stage for us to make major progress with regard to the issue of drinking water and apple for protection. Thank you, all members.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, moving on. Article 2-2, Prior Year Bills. I recognize Harry Phillip.
I move that the town transfer $2,494.28 from current year's affordable funds to pay unpaid bills for on-cabot risk strategies for workers' compensation services in the amount of $2,494.28.
Is there a second?
This article is a routine article at every town meeting. What it does is it pays bills that were received after the end of the prior fiscal year, in this case, at the end of June. These bills are from cabinet risk strategies, as I said, which is a workers' compensation service for the town. The FinCom recommends favorable action on this article, as there's no question that these services were provided to the town, and that's about it.
Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing and seeing none, we'll call for a vote. This requires a nine-tenths vote. So, voting is now open. Voting is now closed. Yep, okay, thank you. The vote is yes, 191, no, 1. The vote passes by the requisite nine-tenths vote, and I so declare. Article 2-3, Strategic Plan. I recognize Caroline Bollu.
Thank you. I move this on to those of y'all listening to the warrant in the mail. The board has actually identified an alternative funding source for the strategic plan.
Excuse me, could please read the motion first and then.
Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, good. So I would say, since the time that you were receiving the warrant in the mail, we've actually identified an alternative funding source for the strategic plan. Therefore, the motion has been updated to reflect that, so I actually move to indefinitely postpone this article.
Is there a second?
Any discussion?
Is there any questions or discussion regarding this matter? I see someone coming, perhaps, to the microphone. I'd please ask, please ask that you be at the microphone. Oh, apparently not.
I think that's just seat shuffling.
Okay. Seeing, hearing no questions or comments, we can move to a vote. The motion is to indefinitely postpone the article. It's been moved and seconded. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The vote is yes, 162, no, 7. The article passes, and I so declare. Just want to ensure everyone also that there is a, the town and through the clerk has a complete record of all of these votes going forward, so.
Mr. Bowler, I'm not familiar with this word postponed. Did we vote to table?
Essentially, yes, essentially, yes.
Yes, it was essentially a vote to, a vote to table.
To table and not to not consider.
Okay, it will not be considered. It would have to be brought forward again at another town meeting. Article 2-4, Waterline Inventory Lead Pipes. I recognize Bill Olson.
I move that the town utilize $100,000 from the current water enterprise fund appropriation fund to fund a water service inventory with a lead assessment study to inventory lead pipes within the town's water distribution system, including all incidental orbs related costs.
Is there a second? Mr. Olson?
So this article proposes for $100,000 to fund the study of the town's water distribution systems. It's a new requirement by the EPA. And in order to get reimbursed by a grant fund, we need you to pass this motion. So obviously, as you heard, our senator previously watered our most important resources. It's a good way to protect our towns in the future, so that is the motion.
Are there any questions or comments, further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. The voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The vote is yes, 188, no, 2. The article passes, and I so declare. Okay, the next two articles are related, but need to be taken up separately. Article 2-5, Schools Reauthorization of Previous Borrowing. I recognize Shawn Farrell.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming. I move that the town vote to authorize the use of the $250,000 borrowing approved under Article 2020/624 of the June 25th, 2020 annual town meeting to now be used by the Hamilton County Regional School District, or District, for a school district facility study. The specific purpose is paying the cost of a feasibility study for the Cutler Elementary School, 237 Hysbury Street, South Hamilton, Massachusetts, 01918. The study for which study the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA. Set amount to be expended at the direction of the district's Cutler School Building Committee. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA. And any study cost the district incurred in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the study shall be set forth in a feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
Is there a second? Mr. Farrell?
I recognize Superintendent Eric Tracy to speak for the state meeting. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. The Cutler Elementary School is a 45,800-square-foot stationary building constructed in 1951 with modular classroom additions in 1952 and '56. In 1992, the Whittier Wing was added, which houses kindergarten classrooms and gymnasium. The school serves 254 students currently in grades K to 5. Now, in 2022, this building is deteriorating due to inappropriate educational uses. Some of the deficiencies include that the building is not fully ADA compliant for accessibility or safe evacuation. Restrooms do not have required clearances for accessibility. Classroom ventilators are at end of life. Currently, it's difficult to get parts for certain pieces of our ventilation equipment. Electrical service is underrated for the building. There is no backup power system. The modular section of the building where music and art classes are located is starting to fail structurally. Repairs have had to be made because of rusted or rotted floor supports. The building lacks building-wide fire suppression system and a modern adjustable fire alarm system. During the last three years, we have submitted statement of interest to Massachusetts School Building Authority to request assistance with this project. As part of the building process, in October 21, we walked through all three elementary buildings with representatives of the school department, the towns, and the MSBA to determine overall conditions. In March 2022, we received the invitation to start the process with the additional green light to add the Winter School into the project for many of the same reasons I listed for the Cutler School. It is important to note that this project will eventually bend with all elementary school students in the district as they move through our school system. Next slide, please. This chart behind you outlines eight modules of the school building process required by the MSBA. Currently, we are in the first module called eligibility. This module essentially amounts to a vetting process to measure our community, that our communities are ready and willing to support a project of this magnitude. The module has a duration of 270 days that began on us, on May 2nd, 2022, and requires the school department and towns to produce various forms of information, including enrollment figures, housing starts, earth rates, maintenance costs, et cetera. The reason we are here today is also related to the eligibility period. We are asked by the Massachusetts School Building Authority to work with our towns. towns to secure the first level of local funding that will allow us to move on to the next module. Next slide, please. This slide is a representation of the more granular stages of Module One. To date, we have met all of the milestones set out for us, and we are currently in the second-to-last segment known as local authorization for funding. Next slide, please. Article two-five is the first of two related to the Cutler-SW school project. As I mentioned earlier, we have been applying for years for this project to be accepted by the MSBA. In FY twenty, the towns authorized two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be used for the feasibility study in anticipation of possible acceptance into the building process back then. We were not accepted into the process and have been holding the funds since that time. Also, in FY twenty, we did not use the warrant article language required by the Mass School Building Authority to immediately use the money for the project. Today, with the appropriate article language pre-approved by the MSBA, we bring back the request to reauthorize the use of the funds for the original intent, the feasibility and schematic design phase of the Cutler project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy.
This is the moderator. I ask that you recognize John McGrath of the FINCOM.
Ah, so, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The FINCOM has made a positive recommendation on this article, and in the warrant book, in the FINCOM section at the back, there's a link to the conversation there. So I refer for pages three through six of that discussion for detail. But the bottom line, from the FINCOM's point of view, is the town needs to invest in the school infrastructure, and given the age and condition, we do support it. The question obviously is, you know, what is a new school going to cost? The feasibility study will generate that figure. In the commentary, though, we did put a sort of a pro forma school cost profile, which you can certainly take a look at. And the FINCOM does recommend that folks go out onto the website, and there's lots of information on how a school gets built, details of all the projects, so there's a wealth of information supporting the superintendent's comments on working with the MSBA. So we recommend favorable action on this item and support the new school project. Thank you.
Okay, this is now open for discussion. Any questions or comments, please?
Rick Mitchell, thirty-six, Rock, P. Lab. Was it my understanding that this is going to include the Winthrop School as well? And where is the Buickers School in relationship to this?
Yeah. Sorry. So the, back in October twenty-one, the MSBA, town members, and school board members walked all three schools. The reason for that walk is for the MSBA to determine what makes sense for whether or not schools are in condition to be rebuilt or renovated. And at that time, after the walkthrough, when they invited us in, they also let us know that they felt the Winthrop and the Cutler were both at the point of, of being rebuilt, a new school essentially. And the idea would be to combine both schools, which would ultimately build one school for approximately five hundred and ninety students.
So that would be the Buickers out? And does the Buickers from that analysis need to be rebuilt?
So at this point in time, the Buickers has not been judged by the MSBA to be rebuilt. It would certainly be part of the equation, because as we go through the feasibility study and schematic time, design process, if we move forward today, we'll look at how to best use the buildings to configure our elementary levels, so that those configurations would be vetted through that process and feasibility study.
Okay. So in essence, through this feasibility study, you would be looking at potential consolidation of all three elementary schools into one facility?
That is not correct, but the idea would be to continue to use the Buickers School as an elementary school, and then if we move forward today and we build one school, combining the two elementary schools, Cutler and Winthrop, we would essentially have to look at the configuration. Do you put kindergarten, Greek, uh, Greek A kindergarten one at the Buickers, or is it because it flipped around? So that would be part of the process and the study that the professionals would do for us on behalf of, of the MSBA.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Just one point, and this isn't that I don't support this, because I think this is an important, that we start this process, but the, we ought to be, I would think that we would be wanting to be looking at consolidation of all three elementaries into one, so we don't have three, you know, three elementary schools, or if we build and consolidate Winthrop and Cutler, we'll have two elementary schools, one that's going to be severely deficient and one that's going to be up to standards. And at some point, we're going to be back going, well, gee, we need to do a Buickers elementary school. So we'll have that coming. And I'm just wondering why we wouldn't be looking at all three at the same time and think about how we're going to consolidate that into one facility and lower the total operating cost and cost for running two different elementary schools? It just would seem to make more sense to do it in one fell swoop rather than just two and then leaving one out going, oh, okay, now we have to go back and look at the Buickers and potentially rebuild that.
Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to clarify that. The MSBA really controls the process here. They determine what they're willing to pay for. I wouldn't disagree with Rick. I think it's, it's important to look at the whole structure, but the, the process is driven by the MSBA, their budget, and what they're willing to fund. So anything that we decide to do, say, we want to build, you know, bring a third elementary school into the mix, that cost would almost totally fall on us. So I think that's the bigger reason, why we're kind of holding the two separately. It's really driven by the MSBA. Thank you.
The other questions or comments? I think we're ready for a vote. We won't be rereading the motion. So the motion essentially is to reauthorize the use of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a feasibility study of the Cutler School. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The motion, the vote is yes, one ninety-eight; no, eleven. Article two dash five passes, and I so declare. Article two dash six, schools, Cutler Elementary School feasibility study. I recognize Sean Farrell.
Hello again, everybody. I move that the town will approve the one million dollar borrowing authorized by the Hamilton-Wenome Regional School District, the District, for a feasibility study for the Cutler Elementary School located at two thirty-seven Asbury Street, South Hamilton, Massachusetts, zero one nine two, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto to the study, and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or MSBA. Set amount to be expended at the direction of the district's Cutler School Building Committee. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA. And any study cost the district incur in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the study shall be as set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
Is there a second? I recognize Eric Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article two-six is a request for the school department to borrow a million dollars for the Cutler School feasibility and schematic design phases. After reviewing information received from the state for similar-sized school building projects, this million and the previous article's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be used together for the overall cost of the project's feasibility and schematic design stages. As I mentioned, the funds requested in the previous article and this current article will need to be combined for a total of one point two five million to be used to begin the feasibility study for the building project. If invited into Module Two, we will form our team of professionals and begin to collaborate with the MSBA to document our educational program, generate an initial space summary, document existing conditions, establish design parameters, develop and evaluate alternatives, and recommend the most cost-effective and education appropriately preferred solution to the MSBA Board of Directors for their consideration. Thank you for the opportunity to present this information today.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. I recognize Christina Shank Cargrove for the FINCOM. Okay, John McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to add a bit more emphasis to the superintendent. Just to add a bit more emphasis to the comments by the superintendent, the MSBA could potentially provide the town, and this is just an estimate by the FINCOM, potentially. All right, let me, let me try it again. Just to add a couple of more comments, the, the MSBA potentially could supply the town with a thirty million dollar grant as part of this program. So following the highly structured approach that the school building committee would follow, the MSBA would certainly evaluate it, make a vote, and that vote would then translate into a pretty substantial subsidy for the town. So the FINCOM does recommend favorable action on this item with the idea of anticipation of a pretty sizable subsidy. So that's, that information is also in the commentary attached to the warrant, so you can feel free to read through that and to get a little bit more detail of the FINCOM's point of view. Thank you.
Okay, we'll open up for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from members of town meeting? Hearing and seeing none, I think we're ready for a vote. Again, this is to authorize one million dollars for a feasibility study for, excuse me, the Cutler School. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The vote is yes, one ninety-eight; no, fourteen. Article two dash six passes, and I so declare. Article three dash one, general bylaws amendment to conservation bylaw. I recognize Tom Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Morning. I move that the town indefinitely postpone Article three dash one as printed in the handout.
Is there a second?
So the select board met this morning in open session to discuss Article three dash one. First of all, we just want to note that we really appreciate all the work that the Conservation Commission has done on this bylaw. We understand their intent to capture and bylaws some exist in practices that are currently in regulation. However, in light of some recent commentary on the bylaw and some open questions on whether the, the change actually expands the scope of the bylaw, we'll be recommending indefinite postponement of the motion three dash one. If you think this motion should go forward as written in your warrant, you can vote down this motion once it is made, and someone else can make a motion to recommend approval of the article. I will note that the select board continues to support the Conservation Commission in its efforts to revise the bylaw, and will continue to support their efforts to bring this forward in town meetings sometime later in the spring after getting further public engagement.
For clarification, can some, indefinitely postpone as the equivalent of table? Correct? Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the floor?
Microphone?
Oh, okay, sure. Please go to the microphone.
Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to give...
Identify yourself, please.
John Rich, member of the Finance Committee. Because the, the article was late break, and we didn't have a chance to publish our recommendation in the warrant, we did, after analysis and meeting with COMCOM unanimously recommend approval of the, the bylaw change. We, we ultimately came to the conclusion that we felt comfortable that there would be no substantive change in the enforcement mechanism when you look at the current bylaw and the current regulations, and this would just be a codification of those regulations within the bylaw. That being said, we understand that there were some late break concerns, and we feel that it is appropriate to allot more time so that this, there could be clarity in this and alleviate any concerns. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There has been, there is a, before the meeting, a non-resident, but property owner in town approached me to see if it would be okay if she spoke to the meeting. Are there any objections to hearing from a non-resident? Hearing none, you may speak, but I just point out the motion is to table this, so we're not going to get into the merits of the bylaw. Thank you.
So, thank you very much. I'm here to be a representative...
Please represent, please introduce yourself and...
Sure. My name's Kathy Rich-Duvall, and I represent the Rich family, who are landowners in Hamilton since nineteen fifty, and we appreciate the opportunity to address this. Now that this is being tabled, I do urge all Hamilton residents and fellow landowners to take the time to read and understand this proposed bylaw change, because it greatly affects every one of you, no matter how large or small your property. At a public hearing, the select board and town members were told that there were no substantive changes in adoption to this current bylaw, and that the new bylaw simply is administrative language. But that may have been the intention, but it's certainly not the result. The posted and marketed frequently asked questions are problematic that claim no change in jurisdiction...
Ma'am, I think you, you've called attention to the, to the issues, but I think, given the nature of the motion that's on the floor, I'm not inclined to allow a discussion about the merits of the...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, there, I see a hand. Please be at the microphone, ready to speak when you have a question or comment. Thank you.
My name's Antonio Watson, sixteen, Zaymore Farm Road. Just would like to...
Just would like to know what were the late-breaking things that recommend postponement of this article? I think. Would you like to share the latest changes?
Well, I think there were, I'm just speaking as a citizen at this point, there were handouts that you came in that raised issues that apparently are problematic for some members of town, of citizens and members of town meeting.
Yeah, so there are some handouts that were.
Please identify yourself.
Tom Myers, Select Board. Thank you. So, there were some handouts in the front that addressed this, so we did receive some commentary from an attorney who was representing a landowner in Hamilton on the proposed bylaw changes. So, there was a couple of questions related to whether it expanded jurisdiction around some of the 200-foot buffer zone around certain streams. So, feel free to take a look at that letter as it was in the front. Those were essentially late-breaking, you know, information that called attention to some of the changes, so feel free to take a look at that letter.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Hi, Kathy Simons, 245 Saget Street, on the Conservation Commission. This has been a long process. We've worked really hard at pulling together the current regulations and bylaw and integrating them, and appreciated the support of the Select Board and FinCom, and are very disappointed about late-breaking developments that I thought broke some time ago and were responded to adequately, but apparently not, and we look forward to working with the Select Board and FinCom to get this studied in addition, and we'll welcome input from others during that process.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Please identify yourself, please.
Hi, Kristin Kastner, 27 Union Street. Hello, Kristin Kastner, 27 Union Street. I just had a question. Hello, Kristin Kastner, 27 Union Street. I have just had a question on if the changes were kind of substantive due process issues that therefore is outside of the scope of what was advertised, and that being the issue of continuance, or if it was just kind of late-breaking news, and maybe, Mr. Moderator, if you needed to talk to the council, it was an issue in the language that we're voting on, or is it just a late-breaking information?
Excuse me, I can't really opine on that. I think the, I think it's up to, you know, the citizenry to make their own decisions regarding the, you know, any bylaw change and what it's. I can say that the bylaw, the proposed bylaw and the language in the warrant were reviewed by Hamilton Town Council and viewed as adequate. Mr. Myers.
Tom Myers, 21 North. Yeah, so just to address that quickly, so the initial intent of the Conservation Bylaw revision was to essentially capture what was in regulation into existing practice in the bylaw. So, there were certain things in regulation that weren't specifically addressed in the bylaw. So, there was some, a letter that came in that called attention to certain pieces of the new bylaw that made it seem that there could be an expansion of the scope of the existing practice. So, given that feedback and the need to have some public engagement around it, we thought it would be best to postpone this to a further meeting so we could further engage the public and get more comment on that particular issue. Thank you.
Okay. I think we are, let's just recall that we are discussing an amendment to table this matter, so really shouldn't get into the weeds of discussing the merits of the bylaw. Yes, ma'am?
Sue Zappert, 25 Old Cart Road. I just want to know what the Conservation Committee thinks about tabling this motion.
Well, I think we heard from one member of the committee who, I don't, I think.
Well, I heard her say that she was disappointed, but I wasn't sure. It doesn't matter if she.
Well, at this, at this point, because the Conservation Commission has not posted a, posted a meeting as a board, they really can't develop an opinion on what it means to table this. That would be what I would say at this point, so. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the motion to table the proposed conservation bylaw? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. If you vote in favor of tabling this, this matter is ended for the duration of this town If you vote not to table it, we'll then go back to the, to consider the main motion, which is adoption of the proposed revised conservation bylaw. Clear? Okay. Okay, I should, excuse me, I should have prefaced the vote by saying this only requires a majority vote. The vote on the motion to table Article 3-1 is yes, 134; no, 71. The motion to table passes. We now pass on, and I so declare, we'll now pass on to the next motion, the next warrant Article 3-2, Community Preservation Committee Amendment of Vote under Article 20/11, 2-7, and Article 2021/5, 2-14. I recognize Sean Farrell.
Hello again. I move that the town approve Article 3-2 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Mr. Farrell?
This is a continuation of our money that we've already encumbered for town hall improvements. We currently are kind of in the process still of figuring out how to renovate town hall to bring it up to specific codes, but due to dramatic cost increase in the construction industry, supply chain issues, inflation, and looming school project, we are postponing our construction, plus it didn't pass with a debt exclusion vote after our last town meeting vote. So, this is basically an extension of encumbering that money for when we do move forward with renovating town hall. CPC has voted in favor of this. FinCom, as well as the Select Board, have also voted in favor of this article. We are looking at alternative kind of solutions to our issues at town hall, which are securing the building envelope, reinforcing the building frame to address a second-floor spread, and making it ADA accessible, and providing fire suppression. We're currently in the middle of a self-evaluation and transition plan with the state to pursue the Massachusetts Office of Disabilities, the MOD grants, to help pay for some of these ADA compliance, and we're looking to do a town hall because it's desperately needed. If you've been to town hall, you know it's an aged building. We have a temporary handicap ramp on the side of the building that was supposed to be temporary, I think, and ending about 20 years ago that's still there, so we're dieting the ADA for our citizens and our staff there. We're also looking at other funds that may be available through the Federal Inflation Reduction Act in funding some energy efficiencies in the building. As you know, it's built in late 1800s, so we're not exactly energy efficient, so we're looking to access some of those grants over the next handful of months, and hopefully sometime in the future come back to you, lose some ideas on how to update town hall to what the town deserves and our employees deserve.
Mr. Farrell, could you just remind town meeting the amount of the funds?
Oh, yes, sir. It is, let me find it from here. Four million dollars.
Okay. Okay. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Okay, yes, sir.
Jay Butler, 78 Old Cart Road, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I'd just like to make a comment. Thanks, Sean. I'd just like to read a sentence, oops, pull it on steady. I'm going to read a sentence from the FinCom commentary on this article, and then I'll tell you why. It says, "Adoption of this article will not jeopardize other potential CPC grants. Funds are available to cover the borrowing costs associated with this article and for potential application to other CPC objectives." The message I'd like to leave you is that your affirmative vote for this, extend these grants, will not affect our ability to approve a grant for the high school athletic field project. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, I think we're ready for a vote. So, this Article 3-2 is to extend the, I guess I'll use the word encumbering, funds previously appropriated at votes of town meeting for possible use of rehabbing the town hall, and that amount is approximately $4 million. Voting, this requires just a majority vote. The vote is yes, 174; no, 25. Article 2-, excuse me, Article 3-2 passes, and I so declare. Article 3-3, Schools Authorization of Stabilization Fund. I recognize Jamie Knudsen.
I move that the town vote to deny authorization to the Hamilton-Wenon Regional School District to establish a stabilization fund for the district pursuant to Section 16G of Chapter 71 of Massachusetts General Laws.
Is there a second? I recognize Superintendent Tracy.
Moderator, Matt, can I say?
Oh, okay, first I'll represent Mr. Knudsen.
So, as you can tell, so the Select Board met just prior to this meeting in a open meeting, and voted to recommend unfavorable action on this, and we want to make one thing very clear, it is not a vote against the field, the potential field project that is coming down the pike. In fact, we took a separate vote that was unanimous, that we are generally very favorable towards that project. This is more about funding sources and the nature of being in a regional school district, and it may be that we can work out something with regard to a stabilization fund in the future, and we look forward to future talks with the school district about that, and I'd also note that the Budget Advisory Committee also recommended unfavorably, that is in the warrant packet, and I imagine they can speak to that in more detail in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. I recognize Superintendent Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Point of clarification, I just wanted to note that the motion made and the motion projected were different. Good morning again. Article 3.3 is a request for the school department to establish a stabilization fund. I want to be clear, it is my intention to use the excess deficiency or budgeted funds as allowable to fund, as allowable by law, to fund the stabilization fund for the athletic facilities improvement project. This article is only to allow the school department to establish the fund. Any monies that move into this fund would need to be authorized at a town meeting, and the expenditures from the fund can be moved with a two-thirds vote of all committee members. There is also a required annual reporting of the use of all funds to be submitted to both towns. State law allows for 5% of the previous school year assessment for the towns to be in the fund each year. In the current case, it's about 1.6 million. Since the funds we would request to move into the stabilization fund were previously raised by the towns, would be no future tax impacts to taxpayers, essentially relieving taxpayers of the burden of increased taxes, allowing substantial monies to be used for a large-scale capital project, in our case, the field complex. Next slide, please. This is the most current rendition of the Athletic Facilities Improvement Project that would be located behind the middle school-high school complex. It includes a synthetic turf, main field, supports field hockey, soccer, lacrosse, football, baseball, softball fields, tennis courts, and track. All of these sports, it also includes lights. There are also synthetic turf, baseball, and softball fields, and tennis courts outside of the project. The next slide, please. Goals. Our goal is to bring kids back to this campus. We have lost a number of students over the years, and in conversations with the party families, they talk about a number of things, and one of it, one of the things that comes up most is the facilities, the aging facilities, and the lack of high-quality facilities for their kids. We want to enhance youth and community athletic experiences. We want to relieve pressure on the town parks and fields. We also need to address the most recent NEASC report that was, the draft was sent to us a few weeks ago, that specifically identifies the athletic fields and track as a possibility for impact accreditation. We want to continue to build community pride. We want to retain and attract families within our communities. Next slide, please. As this slide notes clearly, the cost is between 12 and 13 million at this time. Note, the cost of the project is not reimbursable by the state, but there are a number of avenues being pursued. Next slide, please. There's a community volunteer group that has been off and on together for probably 12 or 13 years, that is currently fundraising privately to help offset costs. We also would like to begin state and local grant applications, and then continue to refine and design the budgeting and permitting. Next slide, please. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. During the last year on the job, I've learned a lot about the lack of trust that has developed through the years between the towns and the school department. I understand some of the reasons, have worked during the last year to begin to rebuild that trust by remaining open and transparent through last year's budget process. We have remained open and available for any meetings with members of the community's boards, including the town manager and his staff. We will continue to do this. Now, we are at a crossroads. We sit on the precipice of some wonderful improvements for our school system that ultimately upgrade and update our communities as well. The success of these projects will require all of us to come together to decide if we are. are or are not ready and willing to fund these projects on behalf of our children. Top-quality schools are investments for the future. We cannot continue to ignore growing deficiencies in our schools, buildings, and facilities, and the school department hopes to now embark on plans to improve our schools, our grounds, increase our competitiveness, bring students back to our schools, and overall to offer high-quality education to every student. We need the tools to do this. I believe in our schools and our communities have the opportunity to do something amazing for our children while improving the value of properties within. People have consistently told me they moved here for the schools. How many of you moved here for the schools? We are staring straight at two opportunities to bring back the luster and in turn reconnect our towns in ways to continue to support truly great place to live and to educate our children. Let's take it on together, be proud of the future we create that will ultimately benefit us all. Thank you.
We'll hear from the John McGrath of the FinCom.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate the comments from the superintendent. And in fact, just this past week, a group of board chairpeople met with the area and the team, and I do feel that level of transparency and trust does exist in town. And so I just wanted to make that comment and recognize the superintendent. The FinCom recommends deferring the establishment of the fund, and it is not because we don't believe in the building project and the athletic field project. We are concerned about the funding mechanism and the sequencing of doing the funding. We just want to make sure that the project, which is laid out in the FinCom commentary, is appropriately vetted, and the town taxpayers have a chance to understand the project, alternatives to the project, different points of view in the project before they decide to fund it. We feel this, in essence, has the sequence out of order. So we do feel that the taxpayers should understand the twelve-million-dollar project, and then how do we fund it? So that information is available. Establishing the stabilization fund is a sort of a new wrinkle in the school funding, and it is addressed in the Mass. General Law references are actually, you know, so stated in the commentary. So again, we do anticipate that the school department would, in the next budget cycle, utilize some of the surplus from fiscal year twenty-two to help fund the stabilization fund. I think that was well discussed. So we do feel that that is the intent of the school department, and we want to make sure the taxpayers understand that. So again, bottom line, we don't disagree with the fields project whatsoever. It's the actually execution of the funding that if we pass this would be a sort of permanent vehicle, and we're just not comfortable with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle Borgan, one forty-one School Street. I am here as a representative from the Hamilton-Wenham Athletic Facility Improvement Committee. This committee has actively partnered with the regional school district for the last sixteen months to help the district achieve the goal of updating the outdoor athletic facilities at the Mous River Middle School and High School campuses for the betterment of our students and the Hamilton-Wenham community. This committee is a nonprofit pending five-oh-one C-three organization comprised of community members from both Hamilton and Wenham. In an effort to offset the cost of the district's project, the committee is dedicated to helping raise funds needed for this project through private donations, corporate donations, and various state and local grants. Now, these improvements have been debated for over a decade, and it is time to take action. We have a supportive and transparent district administration. We have a groundswell of support from community members, and our nonprofit group committed to raising funds. The point I'm trying to make is that the time to take action is now. Please support the district and its efforts to update and bring up to speed our athletic facilities. Thank you very much.
Hold your applause, please. I recognize Mr. Farrell. A long one.
Good morning. Sorry. Bill's four nineteen Highland Street, a member of the Select Board and parent of a Hamilton and Wenham athlete. Just want to make it very clear that personally, as a board, we are a hundred percent in favor of athletic field. This is really a question of municipal finance, the complexity of that. And as you look at the motions, nowhere in the motion talks about the athletic field. This motion is to create a stabilization fund in perpetuity that is only controlled by the school board. It does not come back to town board to vote. Our job is to think about worst-case scenario, worst-case tax rate. Currently, right now, when we vote on a school board budget in this meeting, it's a bottom-line budget. So you see all the charts and graphs and lines. When we approve that budget, the school board then spends it as a bottom-line lump-sum budget, and they can move that money around however they want. If they don't spend the entire budget and they have more than three percent excess, it comes back to the town to lower their tax rate. With this fund, they can move as much money as they want, up to five percent, into that fund. Great that they have a capital stabilization fund, but for perpetuity, this town will have no control, and this, in this meeting, will have to be a school board meeting. We went to the school, and we said you have three other options to fund it that we will support. One is create a specific stabilization fund for fields. They have not been able to figure out a way to do that yet, maybe not enough time. Secondly, form a nonprofit, five-oh-one-three. There is one form that can raise all the private money that we want. It already exists, and all the private money raised by the town can go into that fund. Number two, have a Hamilton fund. We do have one. We currently have a Hamilton School Field Athletic Fund with over half a million dollars in it that already exists, this fund. So we are, as a board, as an individual, a hundred percent in favor. This fund is not well-developed enough, so we are thinking about the worst-case scenario, the next school board, the next superintendent, the next, what happened with this fund? How do you control it in perpetuity? There's no limit on how much they can spend and what they spend it on. So that's our issue. We want more, you know, we trust this board, we trust the intention of this board, but we're thinking about worst-case scenario for taxes. It's the largest tax percentage of people we pay as a school. So we need to have better, you know, we need to work to better, build better consensus. So currently, right now, if there was a project in front of us, we would vote for it with specific funding. There is not a project here to vote for. Where there is a project, we will support it and we'll find a way to do it. Currently, right now, we are not ready, and I'm not ready to vote for this fund, because it doesn't stop the project, it's just we have to find a more creative and more direct funding source.
Please no, please no applause.
Dana Alara, seventy-second Cove Road, I'm also a member of the committee. Mr. Moderator, I have a question about the way the motion was made. I also have some comments that I want to make, but I have a question. The motion in the warrant book is made in the affirmative, but the motion on the floor was made differently. I'm just concerned about that.
Let me read the motion, as I have it, and Town Council can correct me if I get it wrong. Move that the town vote to authorize the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District to establish a stabilization fund for the district pursuant to Section sixteen G one-half of Chapter seventy-one of the Massachusetts General Laws. And there was a second. Is that, okay, well, hang on, wait a second.
Mr. Moderator, the motion made on the floor was different. It was to deny authorization to create the stabilization fund.
Okay. So, so the pending motion was to, well, which was to deny authorization, so I'm assuming, was that, we're tabling again?
No, we're denying.
Well, I, well.
So we get votes of this, but no vote.
Okay, well, I, so, I guess was that, okay, well, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's get this straightened out. Was this, was this new language submitted in writing to the town clerk?
It was read out, Mr. Moderator.
But the rules of the, of the rules of the meeting require that amendment, which essentially this is an amendment, that it be submitted in writing to the town clerk. I'm not trying to bust your chops, but I just want to be sure we follow the correct procedures.
Mr. Moderator, this was a main motion, so it's not an amendment. It was the main motion under the article from the Select Board. So it can vary from what's in the, what's in the article, as long as it's within the scope.
Okay, so, so if this, if this vote, this motion to deny essentially is voted on affirmatively, we don't go back to the main motion, which was in the warrant article?
Correct.
Oh, okay, I'll take your advice. I'm frankly a little uncomfortable with that.
Mr. Moderator.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, no, we're not going to have people yelling from the, we're trying to straighten this out. It's not, you know, we want to follow the procedures, and, you know, I just think people are entitled. Something was put in the warrant. I think that, that should be the starting place, in my opinion.
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Lauren Goldberg from KP Law, standing in for Tom McInnany, who's really in trouble with me now since I have to speak. I just, I want to point out, so there is no motion in the warrant. In the warrant is an article, and the article is to see if the town will vote to authorize the district to create a stabilization fund in accordance with Chapter seventy-one, Section sixteen G. The Select Board had previously voted in support of that article, so it had, the motion that had previously voted, oh, yes, sir. They had voted to make a motion at the town meeting, I apologize. So they had not made any decision about whether to support or not support the article. The motion that they made this morning is the motion to deny authorization to create the stabilization fund. And the reasoning that was explained with that, just so that everyone is clear, the motion was to deny the authority to create the stabilization fund, as was FinCom's motion, or FinCom's recommendation. And the reason that the Select Board gave is that there are questions about how this stabilization fund will be funded and spent. And so it is completely within the scope, in my opinion, Mr. Moderator, where it asks, the article asks, should we adopt or should we not? So in my, in my opinion, and obviously that's all I can have here, I do not make those final decisions, the article, I'm sorry, the motion is well within the scope of the article.
Okay, I, I take your point, and I think on a, on a narrow reading of the law, I think you may be correct. Frankly, as moderator, I'm uncomfortable, I think, when people come to town meeting and people who've put a motion on the, on the warrant, they're entitled to have that motion dealt with. I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest, this is, no one has to do this, that the town, that Mr., who read the motion, I'm sorry. That the Board of Selectmen withdraw their motion, that we discuss the main motion that was in the warrant and vote on that.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, and obviously I have complete respect for the approach that you're discussing, but what was made was a negative main motion. And so if people don't like that, and again, no one should tell you how to vote, I'm not telling you how to vote, then maybe vote that down, and then there would be a discussion if someone else wants to make a positive main motion. This doesn't take it out of the realm of town meeting, it doesn't prohibit town meeting from acting. It's essentially sharing the perspective of the Select Board that voted to make a recommendation to you, and their vote was not to support this. That doesn't mean you have to agree with them, or if you want to, that you shouldn't talk about it more. But it does mean that, that motion is the only motion that's on the floor. It's a positive, I'm sorry, it's a negative main motion, not approved.
Okay, thank you. I think we probably all want to move on and not discuss how many angels can dance on the head of a pin. Just, just, just a minute, just, we'll just note for the, for the record of the clerk's minutes, that the moderator is unhappy with how this played out, but that's neither here nor there. We apparently have a, we have a motion on the floor, and we'll now, it's been seconded, we'll now discuss it. Ma'am.
Again, Dana Alara, seventy-second Cove Road. I want to make two comments, given the conversation that just happened. One, my understanding is we currently do not have a stabilization fund. There is no reason to take a vote on whether to not have a stabilization fund. That makes no logical sense. So I'm concerned about the way the motion was made. I don't think that the intent of the Select Board was to be confusing, but I think it is confusing separately. Having a stabilization fund is a tool that is an, and it is an opportunity for this community to serve our students and to serve our community. This is one tool that can help us to get to that ultimate goal of providing updated athletic facilities. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell.
Just a question, I'm a little confused here. It sounds like, if I'm getting it right, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is this stabilization fund is a non-directed stabilization fund. In other words, it gives the school committee and the schools a carte blanche to put in up to five percent of their budget a year for any use not dedicated to the fields. I find that very disturbing and dangerous. It's giving them a blank check to say, I can take five percent of my budget a year and put it into a stabilization fund and decide where I want to put it. Now, I understand that they say they want to put it into the, into the turf, that's great, but I think the voters of this town ought to have the authority and the power to say, when you've got a plan, when you've got a funding process and schedule, here's what we're asking you to appropriate in specific dollars and cents, then we can actually make an intelligent and informed decision. I do not feel comfortable handing the school system a carte blanche in perpetuity to spend whatever they want in the future. Thank you.
Please no applause. Sir.
I'm going to let Dana answer that question first.
Thank you. Dana Alara, seventy-second Cove Road. To be clear, the members of the school committee do not have a carte blanche, we are elected by the citizens. So the idea that there is no accounting or no check on the votes of the school committee is not true. There is a check. The budget comes to town meeting, and the school committee needs to vote in a public meeting on the use of any of this stabilization fund going forward.
Sir.
Jamar, two fifty-six Linden Street. I just, I think there's some unclarity as to where the monies for the stabilization fund come from. I just was hoping someone could answer that question.
So, so the money for the school stabilization fund, once it's established, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
So, so that money will come as part of an annual appropriation from the school's budget, so they will vote their budget, as they would any other school, the regional school board will vote that budget, that will then come to town meeting for approval. Now, they would have a specific line item within that budget that would be appropriating into their stabilization fund. And I also want to point out that the cap on that fund in any given year is five percent of the previous year's school budget, so they could put up to that much into the budget in any, they could appropriate that much, and then they could carry up to five percent of the member of towns, five percent of the member of towns' total valuation. So that would put it up in the... So that would put it up in the stratosphere, over a hundred million dollars probably for the total, and they could carry it.
Okay.
Okay, just, so just, just set for the record, identify yourself, please.
Joe Mar, still?
No, I mean, the gentleman had just spoke.
Yes, I'm Alex McInnany, Town Hamilton's Finance Director.
Thank you.
Yeah, Joe Mar, still at two fifty-six Linden Street. Uh, I, I guess my point is, is...
Can I make one more comment? Sorry, excuse me. Um, the school committee, as well, at the end of any given year, uh, they do have leftover money from their budget. This is called excess and deficiency funding. Uh, the school committee can then appropriate excess and deficiency funding into the stabilization fund as well. And, uh, that is the sort of underlying concern with a lot of the votes up here.
Thank you.
Last year, though, wasn't money brought back to town in Hamilton where there was excess money?
Um, every year, there is excess and deficiency. We have a local rule here that three percent is, uh, sort of to be retained. Anything over three percent means they come back to the town, and that's by state law. Um, and so, so state law is five percent, we are, we have a three percent local rule. Um, so anything should come back to the town.
Okay, let, let, let's, you know, I, I mean, we want to have a discussion here, but let's keep in mind, this is about establishing a stabilization fund, so we need to keep this at a fairly high thirty thousand foot level.
This, this is important. So, so this, uh, the, the creation of a stabilization fund would then allow that money to be moved into the stabilization fund without sort of the, sort of standard coming back to the town to offset the next year's budget, right? So, so the operational issue is if, if we're facing an override next year, which we've been on the line for a number of years here, if we're facing an override and the, the schools is pushed to move, you know, around figures, say, a million dollars or whatever they move into it, that money will then not offset our budget, uh, their budget, uh, for funding next year to push us, would, would, it wouldn't allow the town to have that money to avoid override. That, that would be the use of that potential.
Okay, so, I, what I'm hearing is, we vote on the school committee every year, and we rely on them to make decisions with the school budget. We also come here every year to vote on the school budget, which the stabilization fund will be a part of, all right? So we have an opportunity every year, when we see that line item in the stabilization fund, to say yes or no. It's not a carte blanche. I have also been the tennis coach here for twenty-five years, boys and girls, six years, we haven't had a place to play. Our girls won a state title last year, playing at Manchester Athletic Club, playing at Ipswich High School, playing at different schools representing our town, all right? Our kids deserve this. It's a long time coming. I've lived in this town for forty-seven years, all right? We enjoyed great schools when I was growing up, and when I came here to have my kids grow up, I was like, oh my gosh, we're gonna do great things, we're gonna start building new facilities. They're gone now, they, they never got it. But we have an opportunity here, long time coming, to do something that's great for the future of the towns and the kids. Kids are leaving this well-respected school district, all right? We all love this town, and it's time that we make a positive impact in it. This is a chance. It's not carte blanche, we have an opportunity every year to vote on this budget. You can vote no then, but this today is just setting up a stabilization fund so we can start making progress. Let's make progress today. Thank you.
Uh, Beth Carr, two seventy, Asbury Street. Um, I have a couple of questions. Is there a way to unwind the stabilization fund once it is established? Would it ever be able to be, um, in any ways revoked? Number two is, what happens with Wenham? Do they have to also agree to the stabilization fund? And then, my understanding was, someone said earlier that it would come back to town meeting that we would, um, for the money, and my concern is, while we do elect our school committee, it gives basically five people, because it has to be a two-thirds majority, five people the decision over a lot of money, and the stabilization fund, as we have heard, does not have to be for those athletic fields. So again, I feel like there's alternatives that are important for us to look at, even if maybe we table this. I know, I agree, I think these things need to take place with these fields, it's a big issue in our town. What I'm concerned about is five people being able to make a financial decision for our town, and, um, that could impact all of us, instead of it coming back to town meeting. So thank you for your time.
Does anyone want to address the specific questions about unwinding a, uh, well, will you finish my question? Thank you. Um, unwinding a stabilization fund, those specific questions about the mechanics? Someone?
Mr. Moderator, if I may address that a little bit, and I may ask Lauren to step up in just a second. Just to Joe's comments earlier, the Chonkrow Select Board fifteen Hamilton F. I, I agree with Joe. We, we all are in favor of this project. We, as a FinCom and a select board, are just not in favor of the stabilization fund. We believe there's other funding sources and other alternative ways to get this accomplished. We, we are definitely in favor of this project. We just feel that there could be a more specific ask, uh, in the future that really is just for this turf fields project. We, we're against the kind of open-endedness and perpetuity of the stabilization fund, the ability to pull out E and D and put it into that fund and not give it back to the taxpayers. Um, and to Joe's point also, that it comes back every year for a town vote, it does come back every year for a town vote, but as I said before, it's a line item bottom line budget, which means we make one vote, and if we're not in favor of that stabilization fund, it would take a no vote on the entire school budget. It's not just voting no on stabilization fund, you have to vote down the entire budget, which as we know in this town, is many times unlikely that we're gonna vote down a whole school budget, so that is also our concern. And Lauren, if you might talk about how to unwrap or unravel a stabilization fund that was involved or established.
I recognize, I recognize Lauren Goldberg.
Thank you, again, Lauren Goldberg, uh, KP Law Town Council. So this is not a local acceptance statute. If it's a local acceptance statute, it's three years and you can unaccept the statute. There is not a local acceptance here, it's an authorization to the regional school district. So the only way to unwind would be to not fund the stabilization fund in the future, and as is being explained, um, it, it is, this is a relatively new statute. The, um, interpretation that's being discussed here is that the, uh, school committee would have authority to transfer money into that stabilization fund on its own, and so that's inconsistent with the way that you normally deal with stabilization funds, which as you know, you voted here, and then it's a two-thirds vote of this body for it to come out of the stabilization fund. The way that's being described is that the, the stabilization fund would exist without any limitations on expenditure type, uh, into the future. So the only way would be to not fund it, and the question of how to make that happen isn't necessarily clear, based on the newness of this law.
Thank you. I recognize this gentleman.
Hello, my name is, uh, Janice Majewski, eighty-six Highland Street. This is my son, Alexander. Um, I'm currently a football coach on the B team for our youth football program, an adolescent player on that team. The reason I'm here today, frankly, is to tell you the honest truth of what it's like for us on the ground, and I think all the other sports parents in town agree. Our fields are in a deplorable condition, and you should be embarrassed that our students, athletes have to play on them. Our team is playing its third home game in a different town because our own high school athletic director would not allow us to play in our own home fields, or our cheerleaders to participate. Our student athletes and our football players, and all of them around town, work very hard. We had, we had to play on the backfield one week. We had seventeen injuries among the four teams just from that one game, because it's not a real field. We have to spend money to go play at St. John's Prep, and boy, don't they love the recruiting aspect of that, okay? We had to go play at St. John's Prep and Manchester Essex this week, because our own town won't support athletic fields that are up to standard for every other town in Essex County and all of our rivals. And that is not fair, and that is not right. How do you feel about playing in all different towns and cities?
I'm gonna, I'm, wait, wait, excuse me, excuse, excuse me. Excuse, excuse.
Saying is, he feels like his own town doesn't support him.
Well, excuse, wait, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, no. Um, well, well, that, well, in the big, in the big, uh, in the big, uh, that's impossible. Um, okay, we're getting beyond the, the, um, the, the four corners, as we call it, of the, of the, the, the motion, uh, and, and your son, I venture to say, is probably not a registered voter, um, which is another reason they can't just speak. So, I mean, I, I think you've, your point has been made, and thank you very much, and I think we'll move on.
Anna Seetic, two-two-seven Highland Street, I'm the chair of the school committee. I would like to return to your original suggestion, Mr. Moderator. I would call upon my members of the select board, our fellow citizens, that by introducing a negative motion, in contradiction with the stated warrant, has introduced an element of confusion to the voters, because we are now, as you suggest, debating the merits of something not at all in the floor. It would be more transparent, cleaner, with more clarity, and more in the spirit of which voters came today, for the select board to withdraw their negative motion. I will make a motion in the affirmative, as was printed in the warrant book, and then the voters of this community could choose to vote in accordance with their wishes. If they choose to vote down the stabilization fund, it would be a transparent vote. If they choose to support it, it would be a transparent vote. The negative motion introduced by the select board has created chaos and confusion, and I do contend is out of order. And I call upon one of them to withdraw the motion. I will make an affirmative motion, and then we can have an actual vote on the stabilization fund, which I would also like to offer clarity, it is not carte blanche. Statute, statute limits it to expenses which are capital and otherwise required borrowing. It's a capital expense savings account. Some of it could be used for the fields, sure, up to five percent is capped. That has to be voted on at town meeting. I would also contend that if we're serious about facilities, we look beyond the fields. As Mr. Mitchell pointed out very wisely, thank you, Rick, we have other buildings that need assistance. This very room we stand in has been literally jerry-rigged with jumper wires and cables to make this meeting happen. If you look behind you, you can see the cables and the cords running down the walls. In the science labs, they're outdated, we have fire hazards, we have ADA issues, we have a bugger school that is also aging, we have windows that don't open. I would contend that if the select board withdraws their motion and allows us to vote affirmatively or negatively on the proper warrant article, we could discuss whether or not we have a stabilization fund to address a variety of capital needs. One of them is athletic fields, sure. We are not a district that is only about athletic fields, we have other problems, and this school committee, this very transparent school committee, with a very competent superintendent, is asking for your help to modernize the district. The tool is available to us, made possible by state law, there's an annual reporting required, money to it is voted on at town meeting, everyone has control. I frankly chasten my friends and colleagues on the select board for introducing chaos into a meeting that could have been resolved, and I once again call upon you to withdraw your motion in the spirit of clarity. Thank you.
Please, just, um, okay, I, just before, uh, we let, uh, the FinCom respond, there has been a request to the, to the, uh, Board of Selectmen, um, that's within their purview. Uh, I think, as you've heard from Town Council, um, there is a proper motion on the floor, and, um, so it, it's within their purview, but we'll hear from you, please.
Ms. Mitchell, Carrow, Jill, FinCom, um, I want to make very clear, we're not voting on whether to improve the athletic fields or not. This is not, we're not deciding whether to improve the athletic fields or not. I was sat there this morning when the select board voted in favor of improving the, the athletic fields. What we're voting on is do we create a stabiliz, a school stabilization fund, and it's very simple. The warrant suggests the creation of a stabilization fund. The, the select board motion is to not create that stabilization fund, super simple. The stabilization fund, uh, creates, and I've said this before, I'm not, my career is not in finances, um, but as a result of that, sometimes I'm able to put things into plain language. The stabilization fund creates a pocket. We vote as a town on the, on the school budget. If there's something left over, it's in a fund called E and D, and the school is required to give that back to the town, any amount that's over three percent. This adds another, uh, pocket that the school committee can move money into, and the school committee can spend money on. The school committee is elected, and we believe them and we trust them. This is a new-ish, uh, law or regulation that can create this kind of stabilization fund. There is a little bit of unclarity as to what the stabilization fund can be used for. We don't want to create it when it's not clear. So, for these reasons, FinCom voted, um, uh, unfairful action on this warrant.
Um, I'm sensing, I'm hearing some of the same points, um, made. I'm gonna let the, uh, people that are at the microphone speak now, and then I think we'll probably be ready for a vote. So, this lady first.
Um, can you hear me? Beth Carr, two seventy, Asbury Street. Um, I just want to make sure we don't make an emotional decision on this, because I think probably ninety percent of us, or a hundred percent, want to see the fields. But my concern is, as Anna clearly just was very, um, transparent with us, she clearly said that that, they're not guaranteeing that that money is being used for them, okay? So again, we're giving five people out of seven on the school committee have to vote, and they can use this money how they deem appropriate for the school. Again, I don't want you to get your hopes up that this is gonna solve the athletic field issue, when in fact it may not, as was just stated, that it may actually be used for something else. So if we put our hopes in that, as well as the fact that I believe Wenham also has to pass this, as well as the fact that we've heard that there is no unwinding of this fund, which is very concerning to me, and I personally think that it should be postponed for further, um, investigation, understanding, et cetera.
Ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, ma'am. Give it quick, it's an answer to, just easy.
Well, uh, this is regarding the stabilization fund. I don't think I want to hear the word fields again.
Uh, you, you, I almost did it, Phil, I'm sorry. Um, so, to Anna's question, point to the select board about rescinding the motion, if we were to do that, we would have to have a separate brief meeting now to rescind the motion, and then you would have to vote on the rescinding of the motion. So we're adding more votes and motions into this process, which, as Anna said, is already confusing to some folks, so I, I'm kind of, I don't want to be that. And Ms. Shankar Grove made it fairly clear, and I hope I'm clear, that we are voting now, the motion is on the floor, to deny this stabilization fund. I feel that is fairly clear. I'm not saying that we are not in support of the thing that Billups wanted to mention, but this is not in support of the stabilization fund, I think that's fairly clear. If this motion moves forward, we vote on it, and it fails, then someone is more than welcome to make a motion in favor of the stabilization fund.
And Ms. Seetic.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Anna Seetic, two-two-seven Highland, I have not moved. Uh, I would also just like to draw the select board and the Assembly and Lottery's attention, there were two prior warrant articles that the select board essentially did not ask for affirmative votes on, and they more appropriately made a motion to indefinitely postpone. I would recommend that another way to have handled this, instead of introducing chaos, as Dana said, we're voting no to create something that doesn't exist. Similar to the vote on the strategic planning allocation and the CPC article, the select board could have made a motion to simply say, we wish to indefinitely postpone, and that would have had the same effect, but instead they have voted to introduce a negative motion. I understand it's legal, I do, I respect that, but I don't think it's at all in the spirit of town meeting, and I, I personally would support either Mr. Carroll taking a motion and bringing it back, or I would encourage people here, because it's very unclear to lay people assembled. If you would like the stabilization fund to continue this conversation, you will need to vote no on the motion to deny, and I will reintroduce a motion to the affirmative. It's messy-
It's messy, it's complicated, it's like government, but I don't understand why the select board did not make a motion to indefinitely postpone as opposed to the motion to deny.
Mr. Moderator, for you.
Ms. Goldberg.
I know you're the la, I'm, I'm the last person you want to hear from. Um, let me just say, this is the functional equivalent of a motion to indefinitely postpone. It's saying that, that, the, the action on the motion here is, I'm sorry, the action on the article is negative. The motion before you is to not authorize. The article said to see if the town will authorize. It's not chaotic, it's not crazy. What it is, what it is, is consistent with what's allowed by town meeting. And I think when I came up the last time, I'm sure you thought, let her to go away now. Um, I just want to remind you that, just like if we were voting on, um, a motion to cut off debate, if you vote no on this, then we're gonna have the ability to come back and someone can make a positive main motion. If you vote yes, it means you don't want to talk about this anymore, and it's done. For now. It's not, you know, it's not stricken from the books forever. It's not like, it's not possible to come back. So again, a yes means you want to keep talking about this.
No.
Um, Mr. Moderator, I just want to make sure that people know what they're voting on.
I think we're, we're, I think we're clear. As clear as we're gonna get. Thank you very much. And ma'am, I'll let you have the last word.
Melissa Axel, sixty Echo Cove Room. Um, I'm an involved parent in the community. I'm a member of the Ed Fund, which raises money to supplement the school budget, um, and provide additional funding for what the school budget can't handle. I think what I've seen today from FinCom, from the scare tactic, that the school committee could potentially have a blank check to do whatever they want is despicable and deplorable at this point.
Uh, please don't be personal in your comments, ma'am.
If the town has voted to appropriate money to the schools, and the school committee is not able to spend down those monies in a typical school year, as we've seen during the pandemic over the past three years, as we've seen during a fluctuation of revolving superintendents over the past six years, then the school committee should be able to keep those funds and reappropriate them to my children and their children how the school committee sees fit. Anybody who's afraid of what the school committee can do with this excess money should also be afraid of what the school committee can do with fifty million dollars a year. These are our children. This is a ridiculous statement, and it's a ridiculous idea.
Ma'am, you're getting me on the, the scope of the, the motion. Sorry, do you have something that hasn't been said before?
Are you looking ready to me? I can't quite tell.
Sandale, three-one-five Bridge Street. Um, my comment is, two comments. The first comment is, everybody up here, school committee, select board, you're elected officials. So I'm electing you to make decisions. I actually don't get to elect the conservation committee who gets to give out money to tennis courts.
This is beyond the scope of this motion, sir.
It's not, it's about, my point is, everybody's elected in this town into different positions, and then with that comes responsibility for funds. So therefore, I don't like the noise being created to say we can't trust the officials with the never ending fund. So I think it's important to point out, Mr. Moderator, that other people here have the ability to spend funds as they, as they wish. So I don't think we should therefore hold that against the creation of stabilization fund. My second comment, in my last two minutes, is the fact that I find it extremely disappointing that the select board decided not to vote on it until right before this meeting. I got that piece of paper in my mail weeks ago. We meet every Tuesday, or whatever second Tuesday of the month. And this has been a project that Eric has been working hard on. And the fact that we can't take the time before a special town meeting, that we're all missing different things for. And, and by the way, this comment applies to the conservation committee too, to put in that time. The fact that people can't spend the time to do a vote ahead of time, so we didn't have half the reason to take in such a delay, is part of my issue. So I will be done then.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for a vote. I'm gonna ask, um, Mr. Knudsen to reread his motion, please, so that we are clear on what we're voting on.
Only because I was asked to do it. I move that the town vote to deny authorization the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District to establish a stabilization fund for the district pursuant to section sixteen G and a half of chapter seventy-one of Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you. And there was a second. Um, okay, so we'll now move to a vote. If you vote yea on this motion, then that ends it for this, this meeting. The article is, is voted down. Uh, if you vote nay, if you vote no on this motion to deny, then we will bring forth what was the original motion in the warrant, an affirmative motion, that, and have a discussion on that. Uh, so, uh, a yea vote is to essentially stop discussion of this matter and move on. Voting is now open. Okay, voting is now closed. Okay, the vote is yes, eighty-five, no, one-twenty-eight. The motion to deny is, the motion to deny is defeated. We now move on to Article three dash three. And I recognize Anna Seetic.
Anna Seetic, two-two-seven Highland Street. I move to approve Article three dash three as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Is there any, uh, further discussion? If not, uh, then we'll move on to a vote. Uh, a vote on this, an affirmative mo, vote on this would be to establish a, an, a stabilization fund under the statute cited. Voting is now open.
Quick point of order. There's no motion printed in.
Oh, okay, wait, wait a minute, what's? You, please adjust. Did you, did somebody answer the moderator's question?
I just want to make sure that, that there's a positive motion. There's no motion stated in the warrants. So I think Anna needs to restate her motion to approve the funding of the table.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Goldberg.
Mr. Moderator, it's appropriate in this situation to move to approve the article as it's printed in the warrant. That's what the motion was. Approve the article as printed in the warrant. So that's to take positive action on three dash three. And just for comments, I assisted with the drafting of the article, of the motion.
And just, just to hopefully clarify the motion that I have that was, that was read, uh, that was in the script. I move that the town vote to authorize the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District to establish a stabilization fund for the district pursuant to section sixteen G one-half of chapter seventy-one of the Massachusetts General Laws. And there was a second. So that is the motion before the town meeting right now. Um, I think we're ready for a vote. So an affirmative vote is to establish a stabilization fund. All those in favor, please say aye. Or, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, voting is now open. Voting is now closed. Uh, this required a, uh, majority vote. The vote is yes, one-twenty-two, no, eighty-nine. Article three dash three passes, and I say deplay. That's all our business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the old-fashioned way. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. This meeting is closed. Thank you for attending.